That was a little loud. The November 14, 2023 St. Lucie County School Board Organizational Meeting is now called to order. Let's please stand for the pledge followed by the Kids at Hope Treasure Honors Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children of you. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Before we get rolling, I do want to thank the Treasure Coast Wind Ensemble with our conductor Bobby Ingram. Thank you for being here tonight and thank you for performing.[82.56][82.56](APPLAUSE). Okay, so first order of business, we're going to open up for nominations for our chairperson.
Mr. Superintendent would like to nominate Debbie Hawley, or Superintendent, I mean, for chair.
Okay, nominations for Debbie, Mrs. Hawley. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, Mrs. Hawley.[118.53][118.53](APPLAUSE).
Okay, our next item of business is the election of the vice chairman.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Ingersoll?
I'd like to nominate Jack Kelly.
Have a nomination for Jack Kelly for vice chairman. Hearing no others.
I'm sorry, you, you need another. I, I'd like to nominate Donna Mills.
Okay, the nomination for Mr. Kelly arrived first, so we'll vote on that first. And dependent upon the outcome of that, go to the second motion. So, all in favor of Jack Kelly as vice chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
So, motion carries four to one. Mr. Kelly? Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Our next item of business then is the appointment of members to committees. Board members, the list was sent to us ahead of time. We just need to reach consensus on it. If there's anyone that doesn't particularly want to continue serving on the committee, they have chosen, just now is the time to let me know that. Otherwise, I will suggest that the committee appointments stand as they are. Are we at consensus with that?
I'm good.
Thumbs up for consensus?
Yes, ma'am, I'm good.
All right. Committees stand as they are then. Our next item is the date, time, and place of the regular board meetings. This is at our discretion. As we are now, we meet on the second Tuesday of each month at 5:00 p.m. and we have one special work session on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 9:00 a.m. Have consensus to remain with that schedule?
Yes, ma'am.
Need that in the form of a motion, please, Mr. Ingersoll?
I'll make a motion that we meet on the second Tuesday at 5:00, and the fourth Tuesday is a workshop at 9:00.
Okay. Board members, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries five, zero. Our regularly scheduled board meetings will continue to be on the second Tuesday of each month at 5:00 p.m. and our special workshop session will be on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 9:00 a.m. Okay, our next item of business is the school board attorney. I would entertain, if you all remember, board members, at the last meeting, the recommendation of the superintendent was tabled to come back to this meeting. So, I would entertain a motion to remove that item from the table.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Any discussion? And remember, this motion and second was simply to remove from the table, the table, take off the table, the item that was put there last month. Okay? Nothing else. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries five, zero to bring it back. Board members, procedurally, this item would come to us at this organizational meeting. However, the matter before us is that Sniffin and Spellman terminated the legal representation agreement as our legal school board attorney effective October 9th of 2023. Attorney Torcivia has been serving as the interim school board attorney since October 10th of 2023. The board must now take action to open a search for a new school board attorney. I'd like to suggest, or just put the thought out, the remembrance out there, that when Mr. Harrell retired, he offered to send an announcement to the Florida School Board Attorney Associations, as well as the Florida School Board Association itself, and they advised all of their members of the opening. That is how we received applications for school board attorney. I would like to suggest that we follow that same procedure. H.R. has not been involved in the process before. And remember, school board members, that the attorney is an employee of the board, not of the superintendent. So, we are open to a motion that we can then discuss.
A motion to discuss?
We have to have a motion on the floor, and then we can discuss that motion.
Okay, let's go for the motion.
So, I'll make, make a motion that we stick with the same procedure that we used the last time we went off for search, with the chairman of the board being the point person, working with the superintendent in all available facilities.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor and a second to direct the chair of the board to begin the search as we did when Mr. Harrell retired, understanding your motion correctly. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, open for discussion?
Okay, so I would like to, to have a kind of discussion because I don't think that we had put some closure to initially what had happened, and I am not comfortable with moving on again until I, we discuss that. And maybe you have come to a conclusion, but I am not, it's not a closed factor for me. So, if that's what you're talking, no, that's not even what you're talking about. This is what I would like to talk about really right now, before we move on to give in the H.R.
Well, H.R. is not, not part of the motion.
Okay, okay, so.
The motion is that the board would take the search in their hands, open up applications through Mr. Torcivia and the Attorneys Association, as well as the School Board Association.
And, and two, when we left it, where we left it the last time was that we were going to continue this conversation. Is that where we left it?
That's what we're doing.
Okay, so that's what we're talking.
What came forth is to bring off the table, the motion that was on the floor. That motion never had, or that recommendation never had a motion and a second. So, it's not viable before us. All we had tonight is to bring the discussion back off the table, which is what we're doing now. There is a motion and a second, though, to proceed as we have proceeded in the past, and not involve H.R. in it.
Okay, so, we, I still don't know why, what initiated this forced resignation, and I don't know that I can move on, or we should move on as a board, without finding out what initiated, what happened for this, to initiate this, 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 where we are right now.
Well, the matter before us is that we have a resignation letter, a termination letter, from the firm stating that they will not be our representation effective.
Madam Chair, I understand that, but there are lots of things that happened before this to bring us to this point. And it's those lots of things that I do not, that we are, I, I don't know what those lots of things are. So, before we can get to this point, I'd like to know what those lots of things are.
That's, that's not on the floor before us right now, though. We have to vote on the motion that's in front of us and move from that.
Okay, but that was the case then, we should have discussed this then, and got some answers at the last meeting, which I did not realize that that was not going to happen at this meeting. So, again, maybe we need to re-table this and go back to where we were? I don't know, but before I can move on, I need to know what happened, what forced their resignation.
Mrs. Richardson, you can make a motion to table this again. That's where we are at this point, if you, if that's what you choose to do. But the tabling is not the discussion that was happening. The tabling is to proceed and announce that there is an opening for attorney for the school board.
So, we are, board, are you comfortable with not knowing? Are you comfortable with just with, with moving on and not knowing, just falling blindly?
That decision comes when we vote on the motion.
Madam Chair? I understand clearly what Ms. Jennifer Richardson is saying. I think it is important for us to be very open to our community and to this process. So, with her wanting to table it, I don't know how far that would go, but I am in total agreement to tabling it until we find out more about what led to our attorney resigning. And we know a certain amount of what took place, but we don't have a reasoning, a clear reasoning as a board, on what led to the forcement, because that was, it was a forcement. It was really them saying, "We resign because we have been basically told we need to, we need to resign, otherwise we were going to get fired." So, we want to know what happened, as a board, and that's what Ms. Richardson is saying, and I support that.
Is there a motion, Mrs. Richardson, to table it?
There, I will make a motion to table, to table that. However, once the motion is made, and I am, I'm, I'm going to anticipate the outcome, then that will be the end of it. So, before we get to the tabling, I would like to say that this was a forced resignation, that they were, they had no intention of resigning, and you keep saying that they resigned, but they were forced to resign. There was even an exit interview that occurred without the board. And I don't know that as a board, that we should sit here and accept that and just move on like that. Because here's the thing, we are talking about the attorney right now. We could have been talking about the superintendent. He is our, he, he is our two direct hires, that we directly hire. So, it, it could have been the superintendent that we're having this discussion about. So, I think that it is very important that we know exactly what happened, what initiated this, so that it never occurs again, so that we at least know or see the writing on the walls, the red flag, something. But this is not necessarily, the, the small picture is that this is about Attorney Shattuck and her firm, but the big picture is that it could be about any of our direct hires. So, we need to be, we need to take this very seriously. It's a big deal, and we're just moving on, we're just flying through it?
No, Mrs. Richardson, it is a big deal, but you have to realize that there are two parties involved. There's us as a board, and there's also the firm that terminated their agreement with us. So, are you going to make a motion to table it?
Again, Mrs. Hawley, there are two people involved in this, okay? Once, once I close this, we're going to move on, right? And I want to be very clear, there are two, there are two firms, the, the, the firm and the board. I am not talking about the firm right now. I, my issue is with the board, how the board is entertaining this, 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 where we are at right now, how we are entertaining it. We are just flying through it like we do everything else, it's hurry, hurry, wait. We are flying through it, we are not getting any, any answers, and we are just, we are okay with moving on. I am not okay with moving on. Mr. Ingersoll, is there any reason why you're just smiling like, are you okay?
Ma'am, I'm just sitting here waiting to take the vote. I'm, in a minute, I'm going to call the question. I'm just, in a minute, I'm going to get a call the question, I'm just letting you go for a few more minutes.
Madam Chair, I take, I take exception, ma'am, for you saying that we fly through things all the time and don't take, what actually, what actually happened, ma'am, is Mr. Ingersoll, there were two different things, items that were on the table that day, and I, Dr. Mills, I gotta say, it was a great area. He started off his letter by saying he represented the board, but he went to aye after that, and he did apologize to you, and you had good, you know, he apologized, I think, three times. That's a different thing. When you say lots of things, I have no idea what you mean by that. What I do understand is when somebody says, "I quit," I understand that equivocally. What, what our chairman was trying to do was to be diplomatic. He was trying to be diplomatic. I heard that night at the last meeting, at least three, and maybe four, because Dr. Mills did not say whether she was, which way she would vote. There may have been four that night. What we said, the three of us and a half, that they probably, if they came back before us, they wouldn't, they would have probably lost. They did nothing for the whole month. We gave them a whole month to come back to us. I got a call from the attorney. All she said to me was basically is, "I resign," that's all. So, I don't know what lots of things are, and I don't know what the surreptitious remarks that you're making are about the board randomly going through things. I take exception, ma'am, and I don't know what lots of things are, but I know what "I quit" means, "They quit."
I'm going to rein us back in because we're getting, we've strayed off topic. Mrs. Richardson, if you want to make a motion, now is the time. Otherwise, I'm going to call for the vote for the motion and the second that are on the floor.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to table this until we get an answer from Mr. Ingersoll as to what is, as to what were the events that led up to the forced resignation of the, the firm.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table. All in favor of motioning, tabling the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of not tabling it and moving forward, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion failed. We will go back now to the motion on the floor to proceed as we have in the past with advertising for a new attorney and open up the application period effective November the 20th. All in favor of that?
Can we, can we still have a discussion?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
If it's about that.
Well, I guess it's a comment.
Okay.
And it is about how this firm was treated. I want to put it on the record that this firm was mistreated by one of our board members in saying that he was going to recommend that this firm be fired. He was going to bring it to the board without asking the board anything or explaining to the board anything at all in regards to why. And that is where Ms. Jennifer's coming from, and I think this board needs an explanation from the chairman of that time, who said, he sent an email to us without us knowing anything or any reason as to why. And I think it's a disrespect to this board in not clearly saying to us what his reasoning was. So, I'm very disappointed, once again, in how we're handling things, because as Ms. Jennifer said, it could happen to any of us. We need to know that, we need to be fair, the process needs to be fair, and, and if it, because it can happen to you out there, and then you would want someone to be supportive of, of you. So, the way this went down was very unfair, and I think, I think we need to go back into the process, this is my comment, and get that explanation. It's not going to be, and we know the vote has already been taken, but I want to put it on the record, it's, for me, it's not fair at all to an individual or to the firm to not even, and to the board especially. And I'm not just going to go along with something that I think is wrong. I'm not going to go along with it, and I want it on record that this was done unjustly. I'm through with it.
Any other discussion about the motion on the floor?
Yes, I do have, go ahead, Mr. Ingersoll.
No, I'll go ahead and answer every question you have. Now I feel, feel better, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. I want the record to show that I had no involvement or knowledge of the initial letter that went out to Attorney Shattuck's firm, or any involvement in the chain of events that led to the forced resignation, resignation of our school board attorney. The board attorney and the position of the superintendent are the two positions that the board directly hires and terminates. Either of them can be terminated at any time without the board's knowledge, as is evident by tonight's agenda. This is a big deal to fire or terminate the board's attorney or superintendent. We could very well have been having this discussion about our superintendent, as well as I just said. Attorney Shattuck, to the best of my knowledge, has done her job, and extremely well. If nothing else, she is a master negotiator, as her skill resulted in the superintendent receiving a 26% increase in salary after being in office only one year. I will be voting no, because I do not agree with all that has occurred to bring us to this forced resignation, and Mr. Ingersoll is not forthcoming with informing the board as to why he initiated this action. Ms., Mrs. Harrison, I would, I would like this to go in the minutes.
Mrs. Richardson, it's already in the minutes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ingersoll. I do have the floor.
Oh, I understand, go ahead.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hawley, can I have the floor?
Yes, Mr. Ingersoll?
And I know this is in the, then it's because it gets recorded. Thank you, Mrs. Harrison. I'm a little concerned, hopefully you called the attorneys at hand, because you didn't hire an attorney, you hired a firm. So, I didn't terminate, I didn't fire. I wanted to make a direction, and it just wasn't me, I felt it was the need for the board. I've been on this board for 17 years, and I've had some extremely, extremely well-thought-out attorneys. I realize we're going to go through a lot of changes in the next two years. In the attorney firm that we had, I felt we needed to make a difference and change. I cannot talk to you unless we're in public. It's called the sunshine law. I can't pull you off to the side and say, "Hey, I'm having issues here." That cannot happen.
But you could have called another meeting in the sunshine.
An executive meeting?
No, ma'am, I couldn't call an executive meeting. It has to be in the sunshine. So, November's coming up, and we all know it's the renewal time for the attorney. I felt that there was a lot of concerns that I wanted to address with her, not just with Ms. Shattuck, but with the, with the firm, because there's been a couple of times when Ms. Shattuck was here, an attorney met in her place, and I felt that that attorney was not as qualified. I sat and listened to another board meeting where her firm was represented, and I didn't feel comfortable with that recently. So, as chairman, I was going to put it on the agenda that we needed to talk about going into another direction, which is all within the boundaries. Not that I fired somebody, I was going to take it to you all in the October, in the October meeting, but I gave Ms. Shattuck an opportunity to let her know. She said she was going to talk to her firm. She talked to her firm, and right before the workshop, the fourth week, fourth workshop, October 27th, they said that they were going to do an exit interview, that they were not going to seek to employment here. I talked to him, Mr. Harmon. I said, "Please contact other board members, because I alone cannot operate as a sole function." And even at that meeting, I even talked to you, because it wasn't out of sunshine, because they told me they were stepping down. I told Mr. Kelly, and I also told you, Mr. Dr. Mills.
What did you tell me?
That there, that letter that I sent out, that we don't have to worry about it, because they were stepping down.
Yes, because they were intimidated to step down, and you did not address this board as to why before you contacted that firm and told them that you were going to be coming before the board. We should have discussed it under sunshine.
But.
That's the point that we're.
I don't know how I'm so intimidating, because alls I did was send a letter.
You can't take the authority, now you, you addressed me, you said you talked to me about it.
Yes.
That was after you had told the firm that you were going to suggest that they no longer represent us.
Exactly.
And so, that's when you told me, "Okay, the firm has decided to resign." Of course, they decided to resign. They don't want to sit up here and have to be fired by someone, so they resigned. So, you being chair does not give you the authority to go before the, the firm that represented us, that we hired as a board, and say, "I'm gonna go, I'm going to go," not tell us anything before you wrote that letter, and then you said on behalf of the board.
No, that was a problem. That was a problem, and I apologize for that. But I said "I" and not "we." So, that was a problem. So, now we move along, two weeks later, and guess what happens? You all get an email, same as I do. What happened? Did you guys not call them? You had a whole month to talk to this attorney firm, you didn't call them, ask them any questions?
You don't know whether we called them or not, because you would not say to us as to why you wanted this board gone. You did not, we did not tell you anything about why.
Because we couldn't have this in sunshine.
Yeah, well, we didn't say it in, in sunshine either, the last meeting.
So, you had the opportunity to call them, but they rescinded.
I made my point on record, so you could go on and on and on, but what you did was wrong.
You wanted me to be open.
And how you did it was wrong, and the way you went about it.
And they rescinded.
And now, where Ms. Richardson is coming from now, you have other board members that's going right along with it, and it is not fair to the individual attorney's office as to how they were taken out of our service. So, I'm through with that, I made my comment. I want to make sure that people are treated right, that's bottom line for me, that's why I'm on this board, that everyone is given the opportunity to be treated fairly and not intimidated. So, I'm through with that.
So, if, if you knew that you were going to let go, let them come in here so that we could fire them right in front of everybody? That's the way you wanted them to be treated?
No, 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 that's why they resigned, because they were not going to.
That's why they resigned, exactly my point.
They were not going to allow you to do that to them, so they resigned.
Because.
And, and as for whether I spoke to anyone on that firm, yes, I have. So, don't keep saying you didn't address it with.
No, I'm asking you.
I know exactly what happened.
And as for myself, I spoke to the board as well, the firm as well. So, to answer your question, yes.
Board members, any further discussion? Time for the vote. All in favor of the motion and the second, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
I oppose.
Oppose.
Motion carries. Motion carries three, two. Our next item of business, then I will turn it back to you, Mr. Superintendent, for the procedural meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Hawley. I call the St. Lucy School Board Leasing Corporation Annual Membership Meeting to Order with all members being present, which includes Mrs. Debbie Hawley, Mr. Troy Ingersoll, Mr. Jack Kelly, Dr. Donna Mills, and Mrs. Jennifer Richardson. All five of the St. Lucy County School Board members shall serve as the sole and ex officio members of the St. Lucy School Board Leasing Corporation. At this time, I call for a motion and a second to approve the appointment of the members of the School Board of St. Lucy County as the ex officio Board of Directors of the St. Lucy County School Board Leasing Corporation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So moved, second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting adjourned. Next, I'm going to open, I call the St. Lucy School Board Leasing Corporation Board of Directors Meeting to Order. At this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to name the Chairman of the School Board of St. Lucy County as the ex officio Chairman of the Board of Directors of the St. Lucy County School Board Leasing Corporation and Vice Chairman of the School Board of St. Lucy County as the ex officio Vice Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Corporation. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
First, Dr. Mills, seconded by Mr. Ingersoll, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, I call for a motion and second to name the Chairman of the Board of Directors as the ex officio President of the Corporation, the Vice Chairman of the Board of Directors as the ex officio Vice President of the Corporation, and the Secretary of the School Board of St. Lucy County as the ex officio Secretary Treasurer of the Corporation. Can I get a call for a motion in a second?
So moved.
Dr. Mills?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ingersoll, in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
Okay, the organizational part of our meeting has come to an end and we now will open the regularly scheduled meeting of the School Board of St. Lucy County, November 14th, 2023. Welcome.
Hope you enjoy the show.
We have a, a large audience with us tonight. I know a lot of parents here to celebrate their musicians and other activities that are going on. We're delighted you're here and we are going to stand and do the pledge again. And the Kids at Hope pledge.
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
And now we get the real highlight of our evening is the performance from Treasure Coast High School under the direction of Mr. Bobby Ingram. Fantastic, as always. Parents of any of these talented musicians that might be with us tonight, please stand so that we can recognize you as well. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. I'll go ahead and, and take this opportunity to plug your upcoming holiday musical event. So looking forward to that. I know it's already been a long meeting for most of you and if you feel the need or need to get home and do homework or whatever, students can be excused. Unless you want to stay for an encore and we'd love that. Thanks again, students. You're fabulous. Okay, at this point, I need to open the public hearing and ask if there are any from the public to wish, that wish to address the proposed adoption of amendments to the school board policies, code of student conduct, and the student progression plan for elementary, middle, and high school. Are there any with us tonight that wish to speak to the board about that? Seeing none come forward, Mr. Superintendent will receive your recommendation.
I recommend the board approve the proposed amendments to the code of student conduct and the student, uh, student progression plan for elementary, middle, and high schools.
Have a motion, Mr. Kelly with the motion, Mr. Ingersoll with the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Mr. Superintendent, I will turn it back to you for our special orders of business.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hawley. I'd also like to bring up at this time our Chief Communications, Ms. Lydia Martin. I'd also like to invite the board to step from behind the dais and go to the front to receive some of our superlatives that we're about to receive. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Prince, I'd like to take a few moments to recognize some incredible business partners. The school district has partnered with Big Apple Pizza in Fort Pierce and on Bay Shore Boulevard in Port St. Lucie to implement their Read to Succeed book nights. After eight weeks of book nights each, at each location, they have donated $10,815 back to the schools, given out nearly 5,500 books, along with almost 2,000 free slices of pizza and Pepsi soda drinks. Near the end of the year, the school that has the highest percentage of students who read a book and turn in the reading log will win $10,000 and a party at their respective store. At this time, I'd like to ask Scott Van Duser and Carmine Lombardi to come forward and be recognized. Thank you so much. And as mentioned, this continues until March 9th, so all those schools that are participating, please make sure your students are reading those books and turning in their forms. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin Perry, Assistant to the Superintendent, to the podium, who will share with us the winner of the Art in the Capitol contest, as well as recognize our administrators of the year.
Chairman Hawley, School Board Members, Superintendent Prince, before I get to the Art in the Capitol winner, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that this is what we get when we support the arts and the referendum and things like that in St. Lucy Public Schools. Three weeks ago, Treasure Coast High School earned a straight superior at Marching Festival as well. And Mr. Ingram? What night is the concert?
December 8th.
At what time?
7:00 P.M.
7:00 P.M., Treasure Coast High School, December 8th, for the Treasure Coast High School Winter Concert. Thank you. And he is homegrown too, Port St. Lucie High graduate. The Art in the Capitol competition authorized by Section 1003.49965 Florida statutes is a statewide visual arts competition that requires each school district to annually hold an art competition for Florida students in grades six through eight. Each winning submission is to be provided to the legislator of the legislative district in which the student resides. The winning art from each district will be displayed in the Capitol during the regular legislative session. We're joined tonight by Maisha White, Legislative Assistant to Representative Dana Trabosi. Ms. White, would you join us, please? The winning artwork is by a student of Ms. Susan Wessel from Palm Point Educational Research School. The artwork is entitled Savannah Wetlands. In addition, this very talented student won the Art in the Capitol competition for St. Lucy Public Schools last year as a sixth grader. Herefore, a repeat appearance is our winner, seventh grader Amelia Sides. Two years in a row, sixth and seventh grade, we can't wait to next year. Eighth grade, when she has one more year to enter. She has with her her parents, her family. Would you please stand to be recognized? And her administration and the administration? Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Prince, I want to also add that Amelia's mom is one of our fantastic teachers at Morningside Elementary School. Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Prince, the Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award was established in 1997 to recognize outstanding assistant principals for their contributions to their schools and communities. This program honors assistant principals who have utilized teamwork and leadership skills to increase student performance, promote safe learning environments, and establish partnerships with parents and community members. She joined the St. Lucy family in 2006, having taught at Manatee Elementary and Westgate K-8. She became an assistant principal in 2015 when she joined the administrative staff at Fort Pierce Central High School before transitioning to Southern Oaks Middle School. She has held administrative oversight of the freshman academy, curriculum and instruction, and master board at Central. Some of her duties at Southern Oaks include curriculum and instruction, ELA, PBIS, and NEST, just to name a few. She's a natural leader with the intense work ethic. She has built her leadership credentials on a well-earned trust from those with whom she worked. Please welcome, with a hearty round of applause, St. Lucy School's Outstanding Assistant Principal of the Year, Mrs. Ayesha Boria.
Congratulations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. I am truly honored and humbled with receiving this Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award. This achievement is not mine alone. It reflects the incredible teamwork, dedication, and support of St. Lucy County Schools' community for our students. I would like to thank the Assistant Principal of the Year Committee for choosing me to represent St. Lucy County Schools as an example of someone who has demonstrated teamwork, leadership, and safety for our students, staff, teachers, parents, and community. I look forward to the journey that lies ahead and will strive to be the exemplary example of the leader serving St. Lucy County Schools. I would like to first thank God for instilling in me the desire and the ability to make a difference and lead with purpose, with excellence, and wisdom. I would also like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the leaders who have paved the way for me. Mr. Robert Kramer, principal from Westgate K-8, who saw the leader in me early on in my teaching years. To Mr. Todd Smith, principal of Fort Pierce Central High School, who gave an elementary, middle school teacher a chance to lead and also model the way of true service, leadership, and excellence. Ms. Mona Ray Miller Buchanan, principal of Fort Pierce Central High School and now my executive director, who provided me the opportunities to lead the seniors towards graduation and ultimately their. graduation and ultimately their life accomplishments. Principals Brad Lehman and Henry Sanabria, both whom I've enjoyed soaring with at Southern Oaks Middle School. Thank you to all for inspiring me and supporting me on the path to growth and success. Last but not least, I would like to thank my family, my husband Isaac, and my two boys, Isaiah and Ivan, for supporting me through this journey. You are my why in all I do, and I'm so proud and grateful to have a strong family core by my side. A quote by John C. Maxwell was given to me to reflect my leadership at the onset of my time at Fort Pierce Central High School as Assistant Principal. The quote reads, "Succeed is when I add value to myself; significance is when I add value to others." Thank you, St. Lucie County, for the opportunity to lead with significance and ensure that all students graduate from safe and caring schools. Thank you.
The Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership was established in 1988 to recognize outstanding principals for their contributions to their schools and communities. The program honors principals who have spearheaded initiatives to increase student performance and promote safe learning environments, often through establishing partnerships with parents and community members. Consideration for this award must include high-performing, effective leaders. He became a school principal in 2006, serving Chester Amor Elementary, then Performance Based Preparatory Academy, and his current location, Samuel Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies, where he took over the reins in 2017. Famous for the moniker Gaines at Gaines, he has led the school to be awarded Magnet School of Excellence by the Magnet Schools of America and receive highest recognition from Leader in Me as a Lighthouse School this year. Under his leadership, Gaines has also been recognized as a Microsoft Showcase Incubator School for three consecutive years. He's a native son who has led the school from being in the lowest 300 performing schools in the state to becoming an A school for the first time in school history. He has proven himself to be an inspirational leader who affects positive change in culture as well as improving teaching and learning. Please help me welcome St. Lucie Public Schools' Principal of the Year, Keith Davis.
Thank you all. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. I am a product of St. Lucie Public Schools, and I am a proud graduate of Fort Pierce Central High School, class of 87. I stand here today as a proud principal of Samuel S. Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies, named for Dr. Samuel S. Gaines, a former school board member that dedicated 34 years to caring for children and our community. We are a school trending from the Florida Bottom 300 to a projected school grade of A this year. The first school in St. Lucie Public Schools to receive Microsoft Incubator School Status, the first school in St. Lucie Public Schools to receive Leirame Lighthouse Award, the first school in St. Lucie Public Schools to receive National Magnet School of Excellence Award, and we were recently identified for the State for ECTAC, which is exceeding expectations, an award given one out of 35 schools. Over 3,409 schools applied, and we're one of 35 for that. SGAT also continued to thrive with its STEM partners, Amazon Future Engineers, TGR Foundations, which is Tiger Woods Foundation, and LEGO. I stand here today because I have driven a... I stand here today because I have a driven faculty and staff. They believe in teacher efficacy. We change, we grow, we build leaders every day. That's the Gaines way. Finally, I want to say thank you to my school family. I want to say thank you to my colleagues and supportive friends, and to my wife Marion, and my sons, and I wouldn't have endured this journey without your faith and support. Thank you for allowing me to represent St. Lucie Public Schools as the Principal of the Year.
I think we've already seen most of them, with Keith's family, friends, schools, people, fraternity brothers, all stand one more time and be recognized, those here to support Keith. Once again, everybody, join me in celebrating Keith Davis and Ayesha Boria.
At this time, I'd like to invite Tom Jones, President of the Education Foundation of St. Lucie, to provide us with an update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Mr. Superintendent. We have two presentations this evening. The first is part of our Teacher Grant Program. We'd like to recognize the St. Lucie County Firefighters Autism Awareness Program. They donated $5,000 to the foundation. The foundation was able to match the funds, and with the $10,000, we were able to support 50 pre-K classrooms. And I'd like to call up Adam Zuccaro, Captain Jimmy Myers, Lieutenant Shane Kozak, and Battalion Chief John Paul Staropoli. And Adam would like to say a few words.
Yeah, I would like to thank the Board for having us here today. I got nothing prepared, so I'm just going to speak from the heart real quick. I have an 18-year-old son, has autism, so it's something close to my heart. Being part of the St. Lucie County Fire District and the St. Lucie County Firefighters gives you a great platform to spread goodness this way. So they got my back and supported me in this autism awareness and acceptance venture. Over the years, we support a St. Lucie County Fire Fighters Chapter or Surfers for Autism. So May through September, two weekends a month, we bring 30 to 40 kids on the spectrum surfing out at Pepper Park. It's more than just surf lessons, that's kind of the byproduct. It's saltwater therapy, inclusion. It's making really these kids a day where they're not normally the star quarterback or the prom queen, but that day, they're rock stars that day. So it's really a great event out at Pepper Park. Like I said, May through September, come out and visit us. We do a St. Lucie County Fire Fighters Chili Cookoff for Autism Awareness and Acceptance, that's coming up December 2nd. We've been raising money, we're able to give back to the school board this year, which we're real proud of, adopting those 50 special needs classes. Close to my heart, I always adopted my son's class, he's aging out, so now we get to adopt 50 classes up here, and those are special teachers, so to support them is awesome for us. Long-term goal for us, just to let you know, is building an endowment to do special needs scholarships in here in St. Lucie. So we're a young foundation, started only got four years doing this, but we plan to get big, and hopefully we'll be giving big scholarships out here in St. Lucie County. But thanks for having us, and thanks for partnering up.
Okay, the... Thank you, firefighters, appreciate it. Second presentation revolves around an award that the foundation received recently from the Florida DOE through the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations, and we were awarded $500,000 to the school district, and this grant will help us work closely with both the district and groups in the community. And I'd like to recognize three organizations that we are supporting with this funding. The first is working with the Fort Pierce PD Rich House. This project will provide a safe space for our youth to receive resiliency, learning, and membership before and after school. And I'd like to recognize Police Chief Diane Hobbly-Burney, who's here, chief, and Deputy Chief Robert Rydel, and Major Michael Santiago, and Angela Brothwaite.
Good evening. It is such a proud moment to be before you tonight, and I want to thank the Education Foundation for supporting our Rich House. It's resources and community hope. We are true treasure hunters, and the richness that is in our Rich House is there, and your kind donation will allow us to expand our wings and give our children even more resilience in everything that we do. So thank you and God bless.
The second $50,000 check goes to the Boys and Girls Club of St. Lucie County. This award will expand their voice program, a mental wellness support program that was modeled this summer with great success, and I'd like to welcome Will Armstead, CEO of the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Board. We are so appreciative of this $50,000. It will allow us to bring an additional social worker into our space so that those young people that need additional support, we will be there for them. So in this partnership, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Now, the third check for $50,000 goes to St. Lucie County Sheriff's PAL Organization. Yes. And we're recognizing today County Commissioner Jamie Fowler, Jamie, welcome. PAL President Lisa John Gross, and PAL Executive Director Jarrett Romanelli. Jarrett, okay, dropping all those items there. And Lieutenant, and Deputy Pat Seibel, and Lieutenant Keith Pearson, who will say a few words.
I just want to thank the Education Foundation, the school district, you know, the partnership that the sheriff's office has with the school district, keeping a deputy in every classroom. This helps us take it beyond the classroom. The 14 characteristics of resilienceness builds character in the kids. Every kid's dynamic, every kid has different scenarios, but this touches on every one of those topics. So our kids are taking the pledge to help us connect to the community, deputies and kids, and thank you for everything you guys have done, and don't forget, every kid needs a PAL.
Okay, and the final check goes to the school district for $350,000, and this money will go towards help. This fund, the funding will help weekly home visits for students and to demonstrate the needs to help with their personal grit and responsibility, and during these visits, they will focus on mentorship, honesty, self-awareness, empathy, and perseverance. And I just have to thank the team here at the district. Heather Rowland was terrific, Kim J., and I gotta find my notes here, but it's a cast of thousands, but what actually happened was when Jackie Wolf knew that there was a grant for $500,000, I said, gee, we've never gotten one that large before. I said, well, let's do it. And the school district jumped right on it with Jackie, we wrote it, and on the first round, we were given the $500,000, and 350 goes to the school district.
Members of the Board, I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the Ed Foundation and their partnership, and all the members of our team. This is an opportunity to expand our efforts in the community with school social workers, supporting the attendance initiative. We have many that are making home visits in the community, connecting with families and with our students. In addition, we're providing professional learning for our teachers, and additional funding is going to go to calming spaces for students that need that extra support in the classroom throughout the day. So thank you so much for your partnership. Mr. Jones, and I also asked Kim J. to join us too. She's been instrumental in supporting the grant process, so thank you.
All right, congratulations, and thank you, Tom. And the good news just keeps on rolling at this time. I'd like to recognize Morningside Elementary and Principal Valerie Foreman for being named a Gold Level Champion Everglades School. An Everglades Champion School encourages teachers to participate in Everglades literacy professional learning, integrating Everglades literacy into their curriculum, and promoting interdisciplinary projects, along with field experience, as well as Everglades community and culture. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Foreman to the podium.
It is an honor to stand before you in recognition of this amazing effort, but this effort is a school-wide effort that could not happen without our chairpersons. I have with me Julie Moore and Brittany LaChance, who are the chairpersons, but it is a school-wide effort that requires every teacher, staff, and student to be a part of this process. I also would like to thank Alicia Torres, who is the K-12 Champion Schools Program Manager, who really helped us to put together the application for this process. She's going to share with you just a few words about the program.
Thank you. You took some of what I was going to share. So, thank you. We are from the Everglades Foundation education team. We're here to honor Morningside Elementary for their achievements as a Gold Level Everglades Champion School. We are overwhelmed by their school's efforts to ensure that our students and our future voters to learn about the Everglades. And some of the highlights this school has achieved as a Gold Level Champion is reaching 67% of their teachers have attended an Everglades literacy training. The teachers also implemented Everglades lessons with 100% of their student population, which is a major accomplishment. Through STEAM, they also researched the Everglades and ways to explore it, collected materials to create an airboat that would float on water using recycled materials. Field experiences included schoolyard bird counts, analyzing their data from their findings in their pollinator gardens, exploring underwater ecosystems and mangrove identifications at the Indian River Lagoon, and water quality testing. They didn't stop there. They also got their students involved. They become a key part of having their students increase their school's knowledge and understanding of the Everglades. They ran Everglades Nights and coordinated community partners. And they also partnered with other major key component, key, the beekeepers, the nature centers, and Florida Park systems. We want to congratulate Morningside Elementary for being our first designated Gold School in St. Lucy County. We hope you take great honor in your school's commitment and modeling environmental stewardship and Everglades conservation through your curriculum, projects, and practices. Thank you for your dedication to building the next generation of Everglades leaders.
All right, congratulations. Now, we'd like to move on to our Star Awards. This evening, we have three individuals we'd like to recognize. The first is Angela Hale, a school data specialist from St. Lucy West Centennial High School, who was nominated by the principal at Port St. Lucy High School, Nicole Talis. Angela, are you here? Oh, there she is. Come on forward, please. Although Angela works at Centennial, she has gone above and beyond to help Port St. Lucy High School. There was a period of time where Port St. Lucy High School was without a registrar, and Angela selflessly gave up her time to train school staff so that they would be able to complete critical tasks as they awaited the start of their new registrar. She was kind and patient, and once the new registrar started, she stayed to help train her. She is an absolute treasure and a blessing to the entire St. Lucy Public Schools community. Congratulations, Angela. All right, congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize Barbara Pierre, school counselor at Fort Pierce Westwood, who was nominated by Matthew Roy, who is the Assistant Principal at Southport. Recently, Southport Middle School hosted its annual Title I Parent Night. To ensure equitable communication, they called each of their non-English-speaking families and invited them personally in their native languages. As a result, they had many Haitian Creole-speaking families RSVP for the event, which caused a need for additional Haitian Creole-speaking staff. Because the school doesn't have many staff at their site, they reached out to Barbara Pierre from Westwood to come to their Title I Night and present to the Haitian Creole families. She immediately agreed, and because of her work, they were able to help 15 of their Haitian Creole-speaking families enroll their students in their after-school tutoring program. Thank you for all that you do, Ms. Barbara Pierre. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, we have Carlos Munoz Vasquez, bus driver for Bus 2713. Is he here this evening? He is not, but I would like to let you know that he was nominated by the dean, Katie Swiss, at Westgate K-8. Carlos is the bus driver for Bus 2713, and they wanted to recognize him for his recent act of kindness. A student was extremely upset, not wanting to go to school because her shoes were covered in mud. Carlos encouraged the young girl to get off the bus, even though she was still upset, where he quickly ran to the back of the bus, grabbed paper towels, and proceeded to clean her shoes. His help calmed her down, and although still sad, she was ready to empty, enter campus and start her day. Westgate is likely to have Carlos as one of their bus drivers. So, congratulations, Carlos, and thank you. And that concludes our special order and Star Awards for this evening.
I won't keep you waiting. We're going to move on to the ESAL report. Mr. Freeland was not able to be with us tonight, but he did send his comments in and asked me to read them to you and into the record. Good evening, Chairman Hawley, Board members, and Superintendent Prince. I want to take a moment to mention a few things, and unfortunately, I am unable to drive at the moment, and my vice presidents are out of town presenting at a conference. While ESAL has not yet ratified it, we have negotiated a very good compensation agreement. I want to address the board to acknowledge the work of both parties in reaching that agreement, and to address how collaboration saved the day in the face of what began as a contentious negotiation. It is important for leaders to focus on the positive outcomes and not revisit the negatives, especially if there is a mutually beneficial outcome. True leaders realize the importance of reflection to learn from all experiences, but know the harm unnecessarily relitigating grievances can cause to an otherwise positive outcome. Our final agreement ultimately addressed interests that each party brought to the table, and that is the benefit of good collaboration. The other benefit to good collaboration is that it seeks to prevent contentious interactions. Let's take a moment to look at the long-term successes of the union and district have had together. These are real numbers for us to brag about, not the paper successes the state claims using skewed TSIA data that ignores the damage done to experienced educators or the mandatory and underfunded increase to $15 per hour that drastically compressed our support staff matrices. Both situations we began to address with this year's compensation agreement. Over the last decade, average teacher salaries in St. Lucy Public Schools have increased 21.3%, ranking 12th out of 67 counties. That's higher than Martin at 7.9%, the state average of 14.1%, and even Palm Beach's 17.1%. Our average salary is now over $50,000. 10 years ago, we ranked 53rd. We now rank 33rd. The median salary has increased 21%, ranking 8th out of 67 counties. Palm Beach, Martin, and the state average are all below 10%. Our median is now just under $50,000. Salary, 10 years ago, we were ranked 54th. We now rank 26th. Our median salary is now higher than Miami Dade and Broward Counties. Trying to create the same comparison with CU is nearly impossible because there are so many job titles and matrices. Looking at the bookkeeper/clerk/secretary/data entry, St. Lucy came in above on bookkeeper, secretary, and data entry, but well below on the clerk positions. But it appears this year will help that group, although until all of the matrices are finalized, it is difficult to say for sure. Looking to our future, it appears that my personal situation will improve shortly. We can return to the meetings I have had monthly with each of you. I feel those were beneficial and an important part of the collaborative relationship between district and union. As we return to those discussions, I hope that one of those discussions will be about returning to the kind of collaboration that included committees with the union as a participant. This literally provided the union and our members a seat at the table and a voice that made us a true partner with the district. The first step is to get back to our meetings. If I find that my return is delayed, I will ask our CTA Vice President, Rebecca Petrie, to meet with each of you in my place until I return. I believe this is the most important thing we can do, and I allowed it to get away from us. Thank you for your time. That's from Mr. Freeland, and we wish him a speedy recovery. CWA, Ms. Martha? It's good to have you with us tonight. No, you are.
Good afternoon. Madam Chairman, Board Member, Dr. Prince. We voted on our contract. It was hard. Hard work to pass it, but we did pass it. And we explained to the workers about the impression and with the bonus that kind of helped a little. And I was telling them before they got here, when Martin Center was a privatized, I don't know if Ingersoll was here or not, privatized the custodial workers, and they had to be cut $2 on the hour. If they were making $10, they had to drop down to $8. And so, that's a good thing for them to come up with all those years that they were short. And that's a good thing. I tried to tell them that everybody didn't get the same thing. Some got 12 and down the line to 3.5%, the lowest. But, you know, you can't satisfy everybody. But I know next year, after we don't have the depression, we will get a good percentage of wages next year. That's what we looking for. It wasn't the best, but something is better than nothing. And just like the price keep going up, the price not coming down on rent or food or nothing else. So, next year, we looking for a good raise. And I want to thank Dr. Prince for hiring the aides on the bus. It do help a lot. And that's, I guess, Ingersoll won't have to be riding the bus anymore. So, you all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Ms. Vickers, I'm going to be on that bus, and it was 2008, 2009. Oh, but I enjoy you.
Thank you, Ms. Vickers, and a happy Thanksgiving to you as well. Our St. Lucy Public Schools Youth Advisory Council, Ms. Sigmund, if you will deliver your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the Board, and Dr. Prince. Can you hear me? Is it okay?
Louder.
Louder? Okay. I'm loud now. The Youth Advisory Council's November meeting was held last Monday at Centennial High School. The representatives from each school were eager to share their homecoming experiences, and it sounded like all our schools showed great pride in school spirit. As we approached the close of the first semester, seniors in our district are busy preparing for graduation and the start of a new chapter in their lives. One of the topics we discussed is an initiative to make all seniors aware of the resources available to them. Many high schools express the challenge when reaching students who are dual-enrolled and possibly off-campus for a large part of the school day. Treasure Coast High School has been working on a solution for this issue by setting up computers at the senior entrance to campus to encourage them to sign up for Bright Futures and Common App. This plan has proven successful, and the idea has been shared to other high schools. We also discussed the formation of the Legislative Committee for the council, and we were honored to host special guest Ms. Poli from the League of Women's Voters to help us jumpstart the group. She also is going to put us in touch with legislators and keep the council informed of new laws that affects our schools. The Legislative Committee will use the information to propose solutions to problems in our schools and give student voice to issues at hand. Mosaic Digital Academy is hosting the next meeting December 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund. That concludes our reports for the evening. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Board members, could I have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Superintendent, can we have your recommendation, please?
I recommend the Board approve the consent agenda submitted.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Ingersoll. Board members, are there any items that you wish to remove for separate discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation. And a second. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Then, Board members, just to bring your attention to the informational reports that are always included in our packet, keep you up to date on all the charter school happenings. And now, we move to our attorney report. Mr. Torcivia?
No report. Just happy to be here until you get through the process.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate you being here as well. Board members, we have a couple of action items that we need to take a vote on. The first is the approval of Board Members out of District travel to attend FSBA's annual conference.
Approval.
Second.
I will not discuss, I'm sorry. I guess you're waiting for a discussion.
So, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Dr. Mills, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I will not be attending. I've canceled my reservations for that.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know, and we'll miss you. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Also before us, Board Members, is the FSBA Legislative Platform, which has been voted on by the Legislative Subcommittee of FSBA and is now before each school board district in the state of Florida. I hope you had an opportunity to look it over. It was sent to you, and I would entertain a motion at this time to accept the FSBA Legislative Platform for 2024.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Any questions, concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We now will move to our Board Member reports.
Um...
Yes?
I hope that's not a reflection of how you feel about me, Ms. Hawley.
Try, you left.
I wasn't leaving for the long term.
Mr. Superintendent, would you like to deliver your report, please?
I would love to. I would love to.
And no, it's not a reflection of how I feel.
You know, just, I appreciate that. So, a couple of things that I wanted to mention. First of all, I wanted to thank, and I know they've already left, but, you know, what we do, it's all about our students, and whenever we have student performances, I just can't, it's one of the highlights of, it's really the highlight of my board meeting, is to enjoy the students whenever they have a performance, and I really appreciate Treasure Coast, Bobby Ingram, Homegrown, and the Win Treasure Coast Ensemble, so thank them. Fort Pierce Central High was recently named the grand champions of the 2023 42nd Annual Crown Jewel Marching Band Competition. As having a child that was a former drum major at Treasure Coast High School, I know that is a very big deal and an honor for Fort Pierce Central. It's an annual competition with schools across South Florida, and congratulations to the Marching Cobras. Also, for the seventh consecutive year, and I know some of the Board Members did attend this, was the, we were named one of the St. Lucy County's Best Places to Work. That is an outstanding recognition for the district. I always say we're a destination district. We're not just a destination district for families and children, we're a destination district for employees, and we've surely become a first-class district that attracts the best and brightest to work for our children in our community. I also wanted to recognize Molly Dunn. She was named the HR Professional of the Year by the St. Lucy County Human Resources Mr. Jim Dunn, who works in our IT department, and for the first time, I think, you know, Mr. Dunn was brought to tears with the recognition of his daughter, so that was really wonderful. We also announced three finalists for school-related Employee of the Year. I want to thank the Board Members that went out and visited the schools with me. Jean Dewey Rayborn, the School Data Specialist at Fairlawn, Amelia Scott, Behavior Tech at Lakewood Park Elementary, and Patricia Laranaga, the Behavior Tech at Palm Point K8. Once again, those folks will be recognized at Night of the Stars. We do have two new staff members to introduce. I just want to recognize them. Taryn Pack, School Safety Specialist. Taryn, can you stand up, please? Everyone knows who you are. Taryn, would you like to say a few words?
Can you hear me okay? Good evening, Vice Chairman Kelly, Chairwoman Hawley, Superintendent Dr. Prince, and members of the Board. I want to express my sincerest appreciation for the opportunity to become the School Safety Specialist Inspector for the St. Lucy Public School District. I began my career in 2006 with the Fort Pierce Police Department as a full-time police officer. In 2015, I transitioned to the St. Lucy Public Schools Safety and Security Team while remaining a reserve officer with the Fort Pierce Police Department. I have gained an extensive amount of knowledge and experience working for both organizations while obtaining degrees in criminal justice and public safety administration. As we have all seen over the last few years, our county is growing at accelerated rate. We have become a more attractive area, bringing in families from all over the country. When families relocate, one of the top priorities is the school district. While it is extremely important, it is not just about the academic ratings, it's also how safe and secure the campuses are. With constant legislative changes and the continued growth in our community, it is vital for our district to have a dedicated role in ensuring our campuses are in compliance with state regulations and to properly prepare and mitigate for if and when a crisis occurs. We have a unique unit of people who come from various aspects of law enforcement, bringing in a wealth of knowledge and experience. I thank my colleagues for working so hard to keep St. Lucy Public Schools safe and secure. I thank Chief Troy Church and Deputy Chief Frank Sable for having the confidence in me to fulfill this role, as I also thank their predecessors, Brian Ruther and Mark Woods. They have always supported and encouraged me to advance in my career. Most importantly, I want to thank my family, who have sacrificed many hours while supporting me through my educational and career goals. I want to especially thank my husband, Dan, who is here with me right now. As you can see, he is also in law enforcement as a St. Lucy County Deputy assigned to the School Resource Unit, so you're getting a two-for-one deal here. I look forward to implementing new strategies, and I am committed to our mission to keeping our school campuses a safe environment for teaching and learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Taryn. And really happy for you and your new role, Taryn. I'd also like, as much as it pains me, in a few months, we're going to be losing one of our longtime employees. Chris Harrison is going to be retiring in January. We have a new visitor, a soon-to-be permanent visitor seated next to me, and that is going to be Chris Harrison's replacement, Ms. Jennifer Lincoln. She'll be our new Board Secretary, so congratulations, Jennifer. Glad to have you on the dais. And Mrs. Lincoln is coming to us from Mariposa Elementary, and I know that Brooke Wiggington was really sad to see her go. So, but we're still splitting time. It's going to be okay until you find a replacement.
I'm on Tuesday.
Yeah. So, I wanted to mention a couple of things. I'm really glad Mr. Freeland had such a great message to the employees, especially the ESAL employees. There are two groups. There's ESAL and CWA. But I just wanted to kind of explain the process a little bit. Negotiations did take a little bit longer, and that was really because of House Bill I that was enacted over the summer, and that allows students to use vouchers to go to private schools. And at the beginning of the year, quite frankly, we didn't know how many students we were going to have. So, because of that, we had to hold off on negotiations with regards to salary. I would like to say on September 12th, we did have an executive session with the Board when we knew what our enrollment was going to be. And at that time, when you have an executive session, you kind of lay out your cards. You say, okay, this is how much money we have, and this is how we'd like to proceed potentially with the two bargaining groups. And I'd like to say that the Board priorities, and the Board priorities entering this year were really about breaking salary compression, starting especially with our hourly employees, and specifically with groups that we didn't address last year, because we addressed some of the groups last year, but we actually gave our word that we were going to address groups that we did not address last year this year. And that's exactly, you know, what we were committed to doing. We also wanted to continue to ensure our starting salaries were the most attractive on the Treasure Coast while addressing salary compression throughout our salary schedules, particularly with our veteran teachers. We shared our proposal with the Board at that executive session on September 12th, and I can't tell you how great it feels to feel empowered by your Board. You know, 5-0, there was consensus by the Board that we were empowered to begin our negotiation process. And that takes collaboration, and I think Mr. Freeland mentioned that collaboration. We were able, by working together, and it took four sessions, that's not a lot, four sessions with ESAL and two sessions with CWA to reach an agreement. We also have, you know, worked together through collaboration, and actually, the ESAL, the union, had made some really smart, they brought with us some really good ideas that we actually adopted as part of our plan. I want to thank David Freeland and his union team for collaborating with us and working with us through ESAL. I'd also like to thank Mr. Rick Palet and CWA and his negotiating team. These people work very hard to try to reach agreements because we have similar goals, and that's to make sure our employees feel valued with a finite amount of money. I also want to thank our bargaining team. Dr. Wild is our chief negotiator for ESAL, Dr. Sanchez with CWA, but we also have Mr. O'Leary, Michelle Thomas. But not only that, we have Marla Gutierrez from HR, and also Barbara Audette from Finance and Business Services to provide some additional expertise in those meetings. This is the best salary package we've offered in recent memory. The average for CWA was 5.5 percent. It was ratified with over 90 percent of the vote. The ESAL average was 6 percent. And also, these were agreements that we came to without either union having knowledge of the bonus. The bonus, we had to wait for the federal government to approve, and I'd also like to thank once again the Board to empower us to think out of the box. Whatever we can do to try to provide for our employees, we're going to do, and we actually submitted a waiver to our federal government to allow us to use rollover Escher dollars to make sure that all of our employees got $1,000 to take home before the winter holidays. That was a commitment from the Board, and I want to say that we delivered that. Lastly, and that goes to every single employee that we have in our district. The last thing I want to talk about is our principals, and I want to thank our principals for being here tonight to support our Principal of the Year, Keith Davis, our AP of the Year, Ayesha Boria. The principals get the average of the teachers, and I want to say, and that's 6 percent. We are having a hard time finding quality administrators because it is a thankless role. It truly is a thankless role. I'm thinking in my mind right now, the principals that were called overnight when a water main broke, when the transformer went out. Mr. Alfonso, you know what I'm talking about? When crisis happens at your school, when you have an angry parent, lost child, you name it, they're dealing with that. Assistant principals, assistant principals, many of our veteran teachers, because of the referendum, make more than our assistant principals. And our assistant principals and our principals are not eligible for referendum dollars, so there's no way for them to supplement their income. I cannot tell you how important the principals are to our system, because let me tell you something about principals. Your ceiling is the school's ceiling. The principal sets the conditions at the school, and I can tell you, we truly have fantastic administrators, principals and APs in our schools, and even on the operational side, we have outstanding coordinators and directors in maintenance and in transportation that deserve every dollar that they get. And I don't care where you are in our system, you are underpaid. You are underpaid. And we're committed, and we are committed to addressing that, and I think Mr. Freeland was spot-on when he talked about our employees have out, from what we've been able to offer the last few years, far outweighs what adjacent counties have done and some of the large counties like Palm Beach. So, with that being said, I want to thank everyone. I want to appreciate the collaboration from our unions. I also, lastly, Thanksgiving break is next week. I want to wish everyone a very safe and happy Thanksgiving, and on behalf of myself and my family, to you and yours, thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We will then move to our Board Member reports, and Mr. Ingersoll, I'll begin with you this evening.
Yes, ma'am. It's been a busy month. First off, I'd like to thank the Foundation for an excellent night of, what was that? Night of what? Opportunity, a gala.
Yeah.
That's what it was. A gala. Also, Dr. Perry with the Giving Back Concert, with all our choruses getting together, the Culinary Showcase with IRCC in St. Lucy County, that was a phenomenal experience, and Treasure Coast High School beat Vero for the district champs.
Woo!
There we go. Had an opportunity to be there. And then, my central volleyball team, we lost in the region finals, but the girls did a great job. Proud of all of them. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Mr. Ingersoll, let me take this opportunity to thank you for your service as our chairperson in the last year. We appreciate it. Dr. Mills?
No more later.
Comments? I pass. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I just want to thank Jason and all the fabulous musicians he brought down two weeks ago at the Port St. Lucy Fun Fest. We had the steel band. John, they have a jazz band, and you saw the one we have tonight. We have so many talented kids musicians in our school system, but they were better than last year, and we already booked them again for next, actually, it's a paid gig, John. They actually used the money to send the kids away, but they did a fabulous job, and we're going to have them again next year. And other than that, have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Richardson? No comment. Okay, well, that leaves me, and I want to just take the opportunity to wish all of you a very restful Thanksgiving holiday. I hope you take time to spend with those you enjoy being with, and your families, and your friends, and if you're traveling, wish you safe travels. Hopefully, you know, the roads won't be too packed, although all of our winter residents seem to be coming this way, so if you're going that way, you ought to have open roads. But please travel safely. We have no further business to come before us, so we are adjourned.